And we will open the meeting at six thirty. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Is anyone here for open session? Tom?
No.
No. Tom is not. Okay, wanna kick us off here, Brian?
Uh, sure. The, excuse me, town administrative report. There's a flu clinic that'll be held on Oct- actually, it was held on October third.
No, that's tomorrow.
No, it's tomorrow, I'm sorry. We're not late. You're late to register, but you're not late to, uh, to attend. So I think folks have, it's been widely noted, but we wanted you to know that we were having one. Um, the Halloween party is kind of hosted by the Hopeston Police Department, but sponsored by Bill Shea, is, will be held on the thirty first from forty eight P M in the police department parking lot.
They did it last year, it was great. They had this, uh...
They did it for a number of years, I guess.
Right. Last year, they had a, uh, a big thing of hay.
Yeah.
And it was all candy in it, and the kids were just... The thing is, I'm allergic to hay, so thinking of...
So you couldn't eat any candy?
No, but just thinking of, you know, what they were doing is climbing through the hay was sort of making me twitch. But overall, the kids had a blast.
Yeah, they seemed to have a good time the year I watched. Uh, town administrative search committee, we met last Wednesday. Uh, and they will meet again, the period, application period closes on the third of November. And I believe our, uh, our first meeting, we're gonna have about three weeks to re- to evaluate the candidates and go through a procedure of evaluation and then meet jointly to share that with one another. Uh, NUCOM arbitration, I had indicated that we would probably have some definitive news for this meeting, and we do have a need to go into executive session to consider that arbitration, uh, potential settlement. And we attach the draft special town meeting warrant in your packet. We have a cleaned up copy tonight, and I'm advised by Joyce that if you adopt the revised warrant, then it can be resigned, the signature page can be resigned by all of you, even those that may not have been here the last time we viewed it. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we've got, uh, review the revised warrant.
Yeah, we had included, uh, three articles from the CPC in the draft warrant, which were, uh, they eventually voted not to place them, so we removed those. Uh, and we've gone through a rather meticulous, actually, we're ahead of schedule, which doesn't happen all that often in this business, but we are comfortably okay with getting the mailing out by Friday, so... If I, if anybody has any questions about any of the articles?
No, I mean, just the one that we had, the comments today from KP Law on Article Five?
Right. There's some, uh, the, the twists and turns with Article Five are because it's going through a public hearing process.
Right.
The question that the planning board raised when I, when I raised the comment about it was that they wanted to balance that, uh, the need to hold a public hearing and then the need to make changes, and then what version gets to town meeting.
So remember last time, last meeting, Brian had recommended some changes. Uh, KP Law sort of agreed with those and then went further
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, to eliminate some additional, um, a couple of words here and there that basically they, they referenced some case law, City of Newton versus such and such, um, where there had been sort of vague terms in there that had to do with, um, you know, poorly, um, compacted material, just words in there that, that were litigious, had litigious potent- potential. So, um, those were struck as well on a revised.
Can you send those to me? I did, but you know, uh, you're, uh, it reminds me to tell you that every time I try to send you something, it bounces back.
Which, which email are you using? The, the, I have the planning board?
If you're staying around, I'll tell you before you go. But, um...
We, you just got that today, right?
That's right, that, that's about three, four hours old, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Now, so it's going in Friday, is it?
Well, it's gonna print tomorrow. Yeah. But you can, I, I assume you could go through some process of changing it if the public hearing warrants, or you want to change it on your own volition, and then just announce those at, at, uh, at the meeting.
Article, uh, four, on the existing and operations of the gravel pits. So the wording is being changed, and it says "and pre-existing." And then, uh, the first sentence, it says "or which pre-existed." So this is directed towards the gravel pits that were kind of, it was in the gray area of their grandfathered or not, and I think this will eliminate that. Tom is...
Yes, that's exactly right. It's, when we had that issue with, uh, we had a ranch, and Ken Brecker got involved, and then KP Law got involved, uh, that, and that comes from our discussion with KP Law. Because you have to clearly, it has to be defined. You think you might be able to win, or you might not be able to win if you wanted to do something, but this clears it up. And then they, they're not spending thousands of dollars in legal fees arguing over where it is, this is coming out. So this is, this is more, if that was the intent, the intent of the general bylaw was existing, pre-existing, uh, gravel pits, but it seems to be some sort of arguing over what the existing means, so this is, it clears, clears it up.
Okay.
We met with the, the, the attorney did ask me, we got one of the things that we talk, can't talk about.
Pretty easy fix?
Yeah. The other ones are pretty straightforward.
Or it's not that easy for a pit if it was pre-existing, though. It's not that easy of a fix. I mean, now they've got to, uh, if you, if they purchased a pit that wasn't, um, ever any records of a permit, now this may be consider, you know, now they would fall under all these...
Well, it depends who you talk to. They still, they, according to the general bylaw, they would, the existing general bylaw, they would still have to conform everything. This just plays up the legal definition. Okay, so if you go forward with, um, having the people trying to clean up their pits, you know, you're gonna spend thousands of dollars in legal fees arguing over pre-existing or existing, so, um, okay. It depends on the point, I guess it depends on what side of the table we're on, I guess.
Uh, anyone have anything else on the warrant? No, so we won't...
So if you want to vote to adopt the revised warrant, and then you could, um, we have sig- we have signature pages, and we have five signature pages, we only need four because Mike's not here, but we need you each to sign each one.
Okay.
So we'll have five originals.
I'll make a motion to adopt the revised warrant as presented.
I have a question. Does the capital line, I understand, for FinCom to approve? Or recommend?
Tell me what you want to do, Susan, and I'll put it in.
Oh, any of the, the financial ones.
Right, but what, do you want me to say a report at the meeting, or do you have a...
We, my intention was to meet before, we have FinCom meet before town meeting.
So you want me to say that it's gonna, that you, the FinCom recommendation will be available at the town meeting?
Yeah.
There's some language to that effect, I've seen it at least. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. So there'll be a, uh, there was a place in the past for FinCom recommendations. In this case, we're gonna, for all of the ones that have financial consequence, we're just gonna say that that report will be available at the town meeting.
Okay.
Because that gives you three weeks then to...
Exactly, yeah. He was holding out for the bid stuff, for the, for the senior center.
Okay.
Well, I'll second that.
Uh, for the discussion?
On favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So you have the signature page? All right, while we're getting those circulated, I guess we can...
So here they are, and they're in line, obviously.
We each have to sign all, all of them.
Just, yeah, I don't know which line you're on, if you're somewhere. And they can all sign them, even though they all weren't here, right?
No, they can all sign because they just voted to adopt it tonight. We did change the, I don't know if you noticed Dan, but we changed Article, or KP changed Article Two to say four hundred thousand, which was the amount of the entire grant for complete streets. The, uh, the statute for, uh, complete streets requires that you adopt the entire amount.
What, what did it say before?
Sixty.
No, it's... No, 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 sorry, that's right. This is just for the design.
Right, but you have to appropriate the grant, and then when you receive the grant, we will then pay sixty.
Okay.
And it's expressly contingent upon receipt of the grant, so we're in the same, nothing's changed.
All right. I, I didn't catch that. I saw the sixty before, I figured it's there.
Well, I did stand corrected. So I gotta change that, um, before I go home.
Yep, I'm gonna do it.
And, um, or, I don't know, I can do it right now, if you can put it in. You have this copy?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just tell me what, uh, yes, I'll do it.
I wonder if you're gonna get all those words on there.
I can do any of them.
Font, size.
It's gonna be a three.
Okay, move on?
Oh, yes.
We done with this? Okay. All right, uh, so it's you, actually. Yeah, right. Committee updates, uh, building committee. Uh, hello?
I'm back testin', I know.
Yeah. Uh, we're gonna be done in ten minutes. Committee updates, uh, the building committee, um, our general bids, filed sub bids were due last week. Um, general bids are due on Wednesday, and we have a meeting at eight o'clock this Friday to, uh, review all of those bids. There, the filed sub bids were a lot better than last time, so that's good, good news. There have been more plan holders than last time, meaning general contractors who potentially can't make anyone bid or know exactly if anyone's gonna bid, that took out plans. So we're just, we're gonna just have to see how it goes. We got one bid last time, we'll, we'll find out Wednesday. We'll find out Wednesday. So I think we've done everything we can do up to this point, and, um, you know, that's that. So, um, the Q R S D task force, uh, we just have a procedural meeting. We've been going through contracts with the, um, uh, C M R P C, M R P C stuff recently that I've been sort of reporting back. We have a meeting, uh, on Wednesday of this week, just to invite them in to see where they've gone so far with it. So it's more of an administrative the last couple of times, while we got somebody on board for this hundred thousand dollars. And now that we have a full scope, what we talked about last week, or week before, whatever it was, um, that'll be, that'll be moving along. And then the town center committee, um, uh, as discussed at our last meeting, the twenty-five percent design, uh, is well underway, and, um, we expect to have another, uh, couple of months till we have that, and then we'll be having another public hearing, like we had, no, wrong word, to strike that. Uh, uh, information session, uh, where we go over the twenty-five percent design, um, for it. So, but we now have a, uh, sort of a conceptual, I slid one under the door, Brian, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at that?
I did.
Yeah, so, you know, Brian, a lot of experience in doing this when they redid Holden years ago, but, um, ours is much, much, much simpler than that. Um, but, you know, that's, that's really it. They're all just sort of moving along, chugging along, still meeting, and, um, went through some pretty important meeting, these last three meeting, these last three committee meetings. Pretty important, um, milestones, and now we're just sort of letting them carry on. And then the bylaw review committee, you might wanna talk about that tonight. This is the bylaw review committee, this is from Vin's email from this afternoon, did you get that?
I did, I did. The, um, did you want me to comment on the email, or the, uh...
Yeah, I mean, you or me, whichever. I mean, basically, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's an interesting situation.
Yeah, I think the, uh, if you recall, I had actually put, I thought, a chart together for you folks when you asked me about the bylaw review, uh, and I went through and picked out those same dates that, that, uh, that Vin picked out in his email. But then I also spoke with Jamie Pitney at the time, thinking, you know, who better to tell me what the charter, you know, kind of intended
Yeah.
than the guy who shepherded it through. And he pointed out, I guess it's obvious, but he pointed out that, um, it's, th- those are minimum requirements, but you could have a committee meeting of any type for any purpose called by the Board of Selectmen every year, if that's what you wanted to do.
So for, for anyone who didn't...
There's no prohibition against having it in the years that are off from those predicament, but those are minimum requirements that you do it.
Okay. I, I don't think we should wait until two, I don't know if anyone went through the email, but basically what it said is, um, to quickly summarize, uh, charter wanted to defect on one, one thirteen. Um, the charter said, uh, every five years there would be a bylaw review committee, or whatever.
Well, not only every five, but they said every five had a year ending with a given number.
With a seven or a two.
A five or a seven, so you had, you know, it, it became a difficult to navigate.
It is. So, so basically Vin said, you know, he'll do whatever, but, um, by the letter of the charter, I guess, it would necessar- it wouldn't, um, the seventeenth wouldn't be five years. I mean, two thousand seventeen would be five years, it would be four years and change, and so therefore, the correct one should actually be two thousand twenty-two, which, which is a long time to wait. So my, after reading the email, and I totally understand it, I still, I would, you know, I would vote to just carry on and have that bylaw r- review committee, um...
Because it's formed, right? We have members.
We have members. So they're meeting, they're meeting tonight.
They're meeting tonight.
That's why George can't come over to, uh, to, uh, notarize your signatures, but, uh, we, we have a notary voting right here, so...
Yeah, so, I don't know, but what do you guys think?
I agree, just keep it going.
Keep it going.
Yep.
But we have to vote on anything?
Anything.
All right, so we have a poll petition?
We have to wait till seven.
We have to wait till seven twenty?
No, seven.
Seven. No, I don't know, I, we've revised us seven times.
That's okay, so if you go to minutes, you can do minutes, uh, any old business, um, public participation, and then, uh, come back.
Okay, well, why don't we go to minutes? Figure out who was here. So we have September eighteenth. Dan, Mike, Jamie, and Jeff. So no Pat?
No.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September eighteenth.
Second the motion?
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
unanimous?
September twenty-fifth, everybody, but me, no, me and Jeff are not there.
So I'll ma- make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth.
Yeah, okay.
I second it.
Discussion? On favor? Yes?
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Great job on keeping up with all the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. I'm still backlogging, so you'll see one from May thirtieth, and I hope that's still a few more, but...
All right, May thirtieth.
She's catching them.
Dan, me, Jeff. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May thirtieth as presented.
Second it.
Uh, discussion? On favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Abstain.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it. Uh, anyone have any old business they wanna get to?
Um, yeah, just on the town center committee, I just wanted to, you know, say how, you know, important it is that, that committee, uh, I'm just really happy with how that's going, and getting the twenty-five percent for the design is so important for Mass DOT to really consider the project. It's, it shows the town is interested in getting the project done, it's just not like you're going there and say, "We want Route sixty-eight," or "Our center of town done," without putting any effort in. And I know you've said that in the past, and I just want to say, uh, you know, agree with you, and I think we're really headed in the right direction, and to get that other sixty thousand would be really important to get that project to keep moving forward.
No, no, I agree. Um, and to, to sort of further that, um, you know, it also, Glenn Eaton, uh, is a big part of being an advocate for us on a project like that, and for, for him to be still involved in, um, seeing that where, he knows our community, he knows we don't have any money, to, so we're spending money, our savings, to further the design on some of this stuff goes, you know, a long way as well.
And that goes a long way, I think, with Mass DOT, and they'll bite on that.
Yeah.
Hopefully, when they see that.
Yeah.
It should be a good return on investment. You spend sixty thousand of our savings and get back three million, hopefully, so...
Yeah, right.
I'd like to get that investment.
Yeah, right.
So other business we did, old business, you know, Brian, briefly, I mentioned this to you about, um, Tom's, uh, um...
Oh, yeah, I have.
What you brought up last week, or the week before, whatever it was.
About the attorney.
Right, and, and, um, we, we just talked about it briefly, may, thought maybe you'd come here tonight, and we could talk about it further, but, um, is that what you were just gonna bring up as well, or...
No, I, I just, you know, just one thing about Patty.
All right, so we haven't, we're, I guess, you know, we, we, we don't have an answer yet, um, but what, 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 what are you looking for?
I'm look, what I'm looking for is an explanation from KP Law, is why they made the decision they made. That's really one of the, practically, is because it's so wrong. And the, the decision they, and the recommendations they gave to us on two separate occasions were very, very wrong. I mean, one hundred percent...
Just help me, because I wasn't here then, so do, uh...
Well, KP, we were, we were, uh, we were, um, it wa- a open meeting law violation, or it violate, was, was, uh, I'm just kidding.
This was a complaint against the planning board.
There's a complaint against the planning board, don't refer to it like a complaint against the planning board. On two separate occasions, we had KP Law come in to give us, hit some advice about writing the, um, opinion to, our opinion or answer to...
Response, or whatever, yeah.
To, to the state, uh, to the Attorney General's office. And there, what they asked us to write, and say that we, we were wrong, that we did, we did, uh, break the open meeting law, and that we should just tell them that's what we did, was completely wrong. We didn't break the open meeting law. It was very, very clear, uh, we had this meeting with, uh, the attorney, and I was like, I was devastated, I couldn't believe that I made that big a mistake. And I went back and said, "Well, I should redo the training on the open meeting law, because I, I must have screwed it up." And I started doing the, the, uh, the training, and it was very, very clear from doing the training that we didn't violate the open meeting law. And then another member contacted the Attorney General's office and asked them the, the question, which is very unusual, and they came back and quoted us exactly what it said on the training. So this was completely one hundred percent wrong, okay? And there was another, uh, time that they did the same thing, they gave us bad advice. My opinion, through the whole, the whole last winter ordeal that we all went through, a lot of the decisions that you guys made and Rayanne made were based on KP Law's, uh, handling of it and their decisions. And I just think they were wrong. I mean, it cost us kind of a lot of money, and legal fees caused a lot of people a lot of problems. And I think they should be held accountable to why they made such a bad decision.
Well, I think the easiest thing to do is we have the Attorney General's response, so why don't we just have them square up?
Well, I would like to send their response, what they told us, our reply.
Well, if you recall, so, just to interrupt here, they didn't send KP's response to the Attorney General. They wrote their own.
We wrote our own.
Right, right. No, what I'm saying is, send the Attorney General's response to KP Law, and say, "This was your response, this is the Attorney General's response." What, where's the difference?
What, right, an explanation. I mean, maybe I, maybe we're all missing something here, but I don't think so, but...
You do run the risk of potentially having the Attorney General say, "Oh, yeah, maybe they are right."
No, that's, that's fine, too.
Okay.
I mean, I, I have that problem. I mean, they, it's almost verbatim, they gave an example in the training, which was the exact same thing that we were accused of doing, so... And I'm, and I think we should get the money back, you know, what else? I mean, the money's not, it's not...
No, no, it's a point, yeah.
I think it's the, the point of it, and, uh, and I do think KP Law sometimes doesn't give us the best legal advice, um...
Okay.
Okay. The other thing...
Okay, I have a flavor for that now. I did not have that before.
Sure.
Yeah, that, to be fair, Brian, Brian asked me to send it, and I just, I just haven't had time to do it.
Yeah, we just, we didn't ignore it, so that's, that's I'm bringing up again.
Thank you. I really appreciate you taking this seriously, um... The other thing is Patty over there, it's, I talked to Larry Brandt, and, uh, uh, it, she's the clerk for the planning board and the building, she, she, she's just getting overwhelmed with work. She just doesn't have enough hours. This building in town is, is picked up, uh, the planning board stuff is, is, she's having, struggling with. She's really a good person, she does a great job, she just, I don't know, doesn't have the time to do it. I know Vin was in before and asked if you could s- figure a way to give her some more hours financially, uh...
What, what are they again? Do you know?
I think she pays, what's it, ten hours, twelve hours?
I don't know, I can tell you.
I think she's three to six.
They were cut a couple of years ago, but she's just, we're just gonna lose another good employee. She's just gonna get frustrated and leave. Not, but she's not said that.
Yeah, yeah.
You can tell, and I talked to Larry, and Larry was supposed to have talked, come tonight and talk to you. She's, she's really overwhelmed with the amount of work. And building, and, and don't forget, you know, building has been really bad down for the last five or six years. It hasn't been as busy, but, you know, there's a lot of construction in town, and I think he's supposed to use the money from the permits to payer, I think.
I guess I'm reading that schedule wrong, it's twenty, so I'm gonna have to make... We'll just double check. We'll double check. This, it's a split, too, with, uh, with, uh, Larry Brandt.
Uh, yeah, I don't mind getting it back up to a point where it just doesn't, you know, we, we have, we have the benefits thing to consider.
Yeah.
The threshold there, but the getting it back up to, you know, pinned up to close to that, I mean, why not? Make us more efficient.
And she, and I asked her if she can work, I mean, that's the other thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And she said she, she, she can fit in her schedule.
Okay, so we'll look into that.
Yeah, it, I just don't wanna lose another employee.
Did, did she indicate, uh, when she, when she said yes, um, how many hours more she could do, or there, is there a limit on it? Just curious.
I don't know what she did, so...
Mm-hmm.
I just said, "Patty, you're just looking like a bit overwhelmed," and she just, I just, you're asking me to do all these things, I just don't have the time.
Mm-hmm.
And the time is a lot to be doing.
Okay.
I mean, our minutes would be behind two months, three months, so it's, it's not because she's not working hard, she works out.
Okay. So, Brian, you'll...
I'll take a look.
Take a look?
I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Um, any other old business anyone's got they wanna bring up while we stall for the next five minutes before the poll hearing?
Not really, the streetlights are in now.
Oh, yeah, so the streetlights are in. Anybody drive, drive by and check those out?
I've not seen them yet.
I saw them, yeah.
What do you think?
Good.
Blinding.
No, not, they're not that bad, that's a small, looks like a small...
Some of the LED lights that they're putting up, the streetlights, really are blinding, like I'm...
Yeah. I think the center of the area, they're pretty bright.
We still got that old one halfway down Main Street, the old fashioned bulb. But, uh, yeah, the new one down in Williamsville, and the new one up here is, works, works great.
So what was it, what were we do- we were just t- testing them out, right?
I think so. We tried two, they're two different ones, aren't they?
They are. One was a lower water...
I watched, yeah, the meeting, that's when I typed up minutes.
Yeah, did anyone notice a difference with that? That'd be the question, do you see a difference between the two?
Between the two, yeah.
Otherwise, you'd go with the lower one.
I'll have to go on a field trip.
Yeah, we have five...
We have four, yeah.
It'd be a running field trip, but it'll be a field trip.
Yeah, we're speeding out it, and here you go.
I'm gonna take, take a look after this.
Yeah, I haven't noticed particularly, so...
I bet you if you asked anybody, pretty much, "What do you think of the new streetlights?"
They'd say what?
What streetlights?
Yeah, right.
I'll have to post it online, check out.
Oh, now don't do that.
No, no, I'm not. No.
Three hundred comments.
So there was, uh, there was, um, uh, Facebook questions and answers, since we got some time to kill, about, um, the senior center and stuff like that, and I had, uh, put some comments in about why we weren't using the fire station. And one thing I said I would do, and I was gonna do this offline, but we got a couple of minutes, is can we dig up the old Pagano and Associates building needs study? Um, and I posted online maybe for people to read, because it went over all the deficiency of the buildings, because there's been some questions online about just, just renovate the old station, and we really can't. I mean, that really went over how structurally deficient it is, and it just needs to be torn down. So we can just, I don't even know where to find it, but it's gotta be filed somewhere.
We can find it, we'll call Mike and get a copy. They would have a copy back there.
So there was a whole building, building study...
The committee that we had, we each had a copy at the time, I even, I may still even still have one, but, uh... Did you have one, Susan?
I did, and I might even have it, uh, um, I mean, I had the paper copy, but I might have an electronic one. So I'll only, when we take a look.
Yeah, if you can find it.
And John Nathan may even have one, I bet John has one.
And then we can just, we can put it up on, on the town website for people to read.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll fish that stuff out, see what I got.
Um, Dan, back to the minutes, you know how they're all, it's all recorded and stuff? Is there any way, like legally, do they have to be handwritten and handed to the, uh, put in the town safe? We can't have it handed in digitally, or, I mean, it's, it's online forever now. It just seems, you know, it's so time consuming to type them out.
I believe minutes have to be actually recorded and...
And hand, and then...
I don't, I don't know if that's changed.
I don't think that's sh- I, I'm not aware of any, I, I'll answer it that way, I'm not aware of a change that would allow you to do that.
It won't be as bad once I got up.
It's like anything else, once you get, um...
Yeah.
And, uh, one other thing about the building study, Mike, was, has there ever been mention of, uh, uh, a historical society? I know this stuff is kept up in the library, up in the top, and you really can't see any of this stuff, but has that ever been discussed or brought up in any studies, having a historical society?
Well, I don't know if it was in the study per se, but I've just heard that it's just not safe for people to just roam around up there.
Yeah, you can't, we almost need like a separate...
I've actually, I've never been up there, I've never...
Yeah.
My, myself's never been up there, so, but the other, there's no fire escape, there's no...
They don't let you up there, as a matter of fact. Yeah, so we basically don't have, it's just a storage, that's where they store the stuff, but it's not really on any kind of display.
Display or anything.
Well, last time I was up there, they, they do had it spread around in the display, but, uh, you know, you have to have somebody up there because there's, it's just right there. You know, it's, and some of it is really fragile.
But what kind of stuff is up there?
Oh, gosh, there's...
Is there?
Ton of stuff, but, uh, I was, uh, it goes back a long, long time, um, probably twenty-five years ago. We, we, we went through all of it and, and, um, documented everything we had. But the, the wor- at that time, there really wasn't any policy with the... But the, the wor, at that time, there really wasn't any policy with the, of what, what they were looking for, what they would accept, so uh, there is an attic to this bu, to that building as well, and up in the attic, I don't think they've changed that. You'll find a, uh, I think there's a swordfish stuffed up in there, uh, just every time someone died, uh, they donated their stuff to the historical society, we have a lot of really goofy stuff up there, but mainly on the main floor, it's documents, uh, card files showing a lot of pictures of the, of the Hubbardson over the years, a lot of, there's some historic, uh, dresses up there. I know there's a dress that was worn by one of the young ladies that grew up in the house that I live in. So there's some really, it's it's a nice place to go. The the historical society used to open it up, uh, usually on Memorial Day or times when people were in town, but, you know, the interest was way below being worth doing that, frankly.
They used to open it up, then they tell them, they'd something in the fall every year, they they used to open it up once a year.
Founder's Day was, they used to do Founder's Day, which I think is in June or July, something like that.
Founder's Day, yeah.
We just have.
Probably is June, see, it wasn't Founder's Day the day we just celebrated last year.
Probably, yeah.
But isn't there.
June the sixteenth would be the day. How's that from memory?
But isn't there a safety concern too, that from, as to another reason?
Well, it's a steep stairway, and there's no escape, I mean, you know, you're gonna have to run down some really steep steps if there's a problem up there.
Yeah.
It used to be, um, it used to be a, um, a Masonic meeting room, I think, there used to be some of the old big uh, you know, the big chairs on the side.
Oh, yeah?
Kind of an interesting place, you should give, you know, the historical society, I'm sure would love to have the, I'm speaking for them now, but
Yeah.
I'm sure they would love to have the, uh, select board go up there, take a look at that.
I have, never seen it, we should, has anybody been up there?
I've never been up there.
Nope.
No, I just assumed you couldn't go up there because it's, it's blocked, it's blocked off.
I think.
I've been, um, in the grave. Years ago.
Stealing stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, that's when they showed up.
That's shit out.
Ask Rick, he'll take you up.
I don't know if there's grants ever available, but it'd be nice to have a a separate historical society building, you know, to put all that stuff on display.
Mm-hmm.
By that brick building next, next to the bank, it's in Port Collier. That's where the Hubbardson, first one, the Hubbardson. Well, the other, the other thing to think about is, uh, you know, straight plus school space.
It's never solved, yeah.
Really? Right. Oh, yeah. Straight plus school space, that's an interesting thought, we have it. Um, okay, well, um, I, um, it's past seven o'clock here, so we have a, uh, poll petition, uh, I assume you're here for that?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Come on up.
Sure.
Yeah, head up here.
Alright.
Good, how you doing?
Good, good, so it's, uh,
Get in the seat, man.
Here or there?
No, 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 right.
Oh, yeah, come on, sit.
Okay, sorry, first one.
No.
So I guess we get a, uh, petition for a poll, uh.
So who are you?
My name's Mark Tapley, I'm from National Grid, um, I'm one of the designers there, the, uh, the designer that made the design, it's on sick today, so I covered for her.
Oh, lucky you.
Yes, um, so we're looking to put a poll on, uh, New Westminster Road, um, it's gonna be poll fifty-two dash one.
So this is our second on the last page, guys?
Yeah.
Shows the, well, the actual location of it?
And it's to, uh, to remove an air trespass that we have over there.
Remove what?
An aerial trespass.
What's it, what's that?
So the, uh, the lines that are currently there, um, they go over someone else's property, so it's to fix that, to put it on the property line itself, and take it from going over someone else's property to serve someone.
So this is a a a poll and line that is just, uh.
It's it's currently there, but it's about ten, fifteen feet over, and it's going over someone else's property, so it's to fix that and put it right on the property line.
Is it just because you guys are checking your polls periodically and doing due diligence, or is this somebody complained about something?
Yes. Nope, um, it's, uh, it was a request that came in through, uh, one of the, uh, Nate Walsh, who, uh, and it was to, uh, he was doing some periodic checks, and it was to to fix that and be sorry.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, alright, is there anything we have to read or or know?
You have to sign three copies.
Okay.
I have a question for this, regarding this.
Three or five.
Sure.
Uh, how many poles are mark fifty-two dash one? Um, I have a picture of one that's on my property. I'm the last house on the left on Brigham Street, just before you get to that intersection.
Okay.
And 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 several years ago.
What the hell do you have a picture of your pole for?
Well, I went out and took it because it, what they're listing as the one they're gonna put up is fifty-two dash one.
Oh.
And that's the number on my pole, and I'm just concerned that when there's a problem at pole fifty-two dash one, we're going to go to the right spot.
Is that a Horizon poll maybe?
Every street could have fifty-two dash one, so every street has their own poll numbers.
Okay, so we could have three fifty-two dash ones right there in that area?
Yes.
New Westminster, Old Westminster, and and Brigham Street.
And, yes. That's correct.
Okay.
Alright.
You answered my question.
Yeah. Um, okay.
Again, I had a question, a parcel number, it's the third parcel, unknown. No, we don't know who owns that, it comes back to the town Hubbardson, you know, mailing address, but, uh, so that must just be a piece of property that these, uh, unknown.
Yeah, I don't know.
No clear title, uh, it may be, it may have been cause of New Westminster when it was ro, moved years ago, there might be a sliver.
I was gonna say, this is more likely, uh, uh, s- something that was ca- ca- caught up.
A s, just this, when they surveyed, they never resurveyed it and 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 put the town as, uh, you know, or came up with a clock plan.
Well, we acquired it through, because nobody paid taxes on it over time, and
Yeah.
Over.
We just got the time. Um, in the two thousand earlys, when I was a selectman, we we tried to auction off all of the property that was, you know, not being paid taxes on, and we had taken possession of. And there were two pieces on on my side of of New Westminster. It wa, right where what New Westmin, New Westminster starts, Old Westminster goes off, and there's an old schoolhouse, which is a home now there, that, whose driveway was Brigham Street at one point, in fact, when we first got to town, the town plowed his driveway right up and all the snow right up against his garage all the time. And, uh,
Friendly to it.
Yeah, well, yes, even at that, but there were two slivers on the, on that side of
Usually the things are.
Of that, where when they put the new street in, it it took a couple of pieces of property, which the people who now lived on that other side of the road weren't paying taxes on anymore, and they went up for auction, and and I think both of them were bought. But, uh, the person that bought one of them, uh, and that that piece now is where there, there's a house back in there on off of New Westminster. But the other one was never, it was purchased by someone who, quite frankly, I think knew that the people that, the young lady, in fact, was one of the K daughters, lived in that house, and they were going to, they figured that they would wanna buy that, so they were, they were going out on a limb, and the K's never bought it from them. And I think they stopped paying taxes on it, yeah, so it's probably back in the town file.
Yeah. Yep, let me see.
And it's, it's not big enough to do anything with, it's like point two five of an acre.
Yep. Okay, any, any, we have anything else on this? Okay, so, is there a motion?
You have to read the, uh, they have to read the poll petition.
Do I have to read this whole thing?
I I, you, I would say it as presented, but if you, uh, would I be happy to read it or or you can?
Yeah, read it. Um, so this is the notice of butters, or?
No, this one, order for pole and wire locations.
Let me take yours. Um, okay, it says order for pole and wire locations in the town of Hubbardson, Massachusetts, notice having been given and public hearing held as provided by law, is hereby ordered that National Grid and be, and it is hereby granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way or ways here and after referred to, as requested in petition of said company dated the twenty-fifth of August, two thousand seventeen. All construction under this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions, poles should be of sound timber and reasonably straight, and shall be set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked in the Westminster Road, Hubbardson, Massachusetts, number, uh, two four four zero nine eight two zero dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, filed with this order. There may be attached to said poles such wires, cables, and fixtures as needed in their business, and all of said wires and cables shall be placed at a height of not less than twenty feet from the ground, the following are the public ways or part of ways along which the poles above referred to may be erected, and the number of poles which may be erected thereon under this order. New Westminster Road, National Grid to install one SO, what's SO?
Uh, sole owned.
Sole owned pole, SO pole on New Westminster Road, beginning at a point approximately forty-three feet east of the center line of the intersection of Old Westminster Road. National Grid to install pole fifty-two dash one, approximately a hundred and forty feet northeast of pole fifty-one. I hereby, hereby certify that the foregoing order was adopted at a meeting in ci- ci- city council, uh, of the city town of blah blah blah.
Alright, so I'll make a, make a motion to approve the poll petition as presented.
Second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
These are, um, like, these all need to be signed, there's only a slot for four, but you can just put a name under or above, that's what I was given by them. By Horizon, National Grid.
Right, next to us.
Yeah, just go look at it.
So you're gonna put the funding committee, second one, those three. I just don't wanna hold it up, cause I'm not here until Wednesday, I'm not.
So you just wanna hear, or tell meetings to just add it?
Yes, something, and if you can get, if you can figure out a way to say that with less work, it's pretty big. We aren't gonna have the, the, until.
So article one, two, and three?
I think so, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, I guess while we wait for that, Brian, so how's your, um, you know, your first shot at it here, I know this is, this is sort of old hat for you, but as far as your time management and your days that you've chosen to work, all that sort of stuff, is it?
Seems to be going okay, I I will say there's been some creep, uh, in terms of, um, uh, hours, and and we're trying to keep meetings uh, to six o'clock so that the day doesn't get, you know, longer, we start at seven thirty, we started one meeting at seven thirty, and it, it just, it's killing time.
Right. Yeah. Right, right.
Uh, so we're, uh, we're learning a little bit as we go, and, um, we're fitting in, the the task force meetings and the search committee are on
Okay.
the nights of the days I'm gonna be here.
Right, okay. Okay, thanks. Alright, any, any, anyone here for, um, public press questions, answers, that you guys got anything? Okay, what we have, uh, that concludes our open session, uh, agenda, and we have, uh, an executive session, uh, items to discuss as well.
So we need a motion to adjourn from the open session in order to move into executive session with no intention of
Returning except to adjourn.
Of returning to, uh, open session.
Correct.[1669.64]